I'll get going. Thank you all for having me. My name is Leah Cassanda. I'm a planner with Whitman Rock Heart and Associates, and I'm joined this evening with Dan Fritz, who is an engineer on our team. So this evening, we have a couple of things lined up for you. We're gonna start out with myself providing a high-level overview of the Active Erie Transportation Plan, followed by Erin providing results of the recent survey about Active Erie BikeWay projects, and then Leanne will jump in to discuss some timeline issues. So I know I had the pleasure of presenting to some of your body back in February of 2021, which was the same date where the Active Erie Plan was adopted by council. The intent of the document is to kind of provide the city with a roadmap for how to improve conditions for people walking and biking throughout the city. And really, the goals are to improve safety for everyone, no matter how you are traveling, whether, you know, walking and biking, of course, is a focus, but also improve conditions for people walking and biking also make the roads safer for people driving as well. And one thing that really struck us when we came to work on this plan is that a lot of folks in Erie don't have a choice. The percentage of households within the city of Erie without access to a car is 18, which is actually pretty high. We do a lot of work in this space, Pennsylvania, Maryland, then Delaware. 18% is definitely on the higher end of the places we work. There was a very robust steering committee comprised of all the organizations you see listed on the screen who helped guide our actions. And unfortunately, the plan did kick off in the midst of COVID, so we did have to kind of pivot from a lot of in-person activities to collect feedback from the general public online. But we did have a very successful survey back in 2020, actually probably 2019, 2020, when we received 328 responses, which is pretty high. And we were able to kind of advertise that on a variety of different sources to get the word out. And some of the really telling things we learned there was the majority of folks who did respond to the survey do drive their own car to get around, but a lot of people also identified as, you know, regularly walking for transportation or biking, and some transit users as well. And the other really telling statistic we heard was, you know, if you're not biking or don't bike as much as you want to, what are your reasons? And 50% of respondents said a lack of bike infrastructure is a reason that they don't currently bike. So when we approached that, kind of developing recommendations for physical changes to the road network in Erie, we referred a lot to guidance from the federal government. They produce a document that I'm gonna refer to a little bit later in the presentation, the Bike Lane Planning and Design Guide. And really, they kind of hold up seven principles when you're looking at bicycle network design. Safety is the first and foremost among them, so we want any proposed infrastructure to be safe for the people using it, and we want it to feel comfortable. So we don't want folks to feel at risk when they're using a piece of bike infrastructure. Also, things need to be well-connected. Obviously, when we start with one project, it doesn't necessarily connect things, but over time, as you begin building out the bike network, you want to have that interconnectivity the same way as our road network works very well for motor vehicles right now. So we kind of came up with this grid of bikeways running east to west and north and south across the city that were kind of aspirational, but also realistic and fit with, you know, the city's budget and capacity to grow over time. And we really specified those to work for any adult cyclist, regardless of how, what their skill level is. And you see that designation LTS 1 or 2. That's level of traffic stress. So how comfortable does that feel? We don't want bike infrastructure to be something that only a really seasoned cyclist, who is comfortable riding very fast with traffic, like, they can get around as is right now. We want this to be something that, you know, anyone who's comfortable on a bike is pretty much able to get out their door and ride safely on. So you'll see on the map that I'm about to share on the next page, we propose kind of some bikeways along existing low-stress streets, which really don't need much physical improvement to designate them, maybe some signage and some pavement markings. In pink, bikeways that might require some more significant construction, and then also in yellow, some local connections. So the map that resulted from that is shown on the screen here. And to make that a little easier for you all to read, basically, four east-west routes, 6th Street, 19th and 21st, kind of along the 32nd Street corridor. It obviously has to wiggle on some other streets due to the road network. And then 38th Street, and then our north-south corridors running across there, Pittsburgh, Green Garden, Cascade, Branch, East Ave, and Downing Ave, as well as a very little segment of Bird Drive on the easternmost part of the city. So tonight, I know, basically, you know, when we brought this idea for a grid to city council a couple of years ago, we did review these very same maps and discuss at a high level this proposal. But I know largely this evening that our concern is one of those north-south bikeways, Green Garden Boulevard. So here's the actual shot from the plan that was adopted, that kind of just is very high-level look at what we could potentially do on Green Garden Boulevard. And again, based on that map, you'll see, you know, we do hope eventually this facility can extend all the way from Frontier Park down to 38th Street. But at this point in time, the funding doesn't quite get us all the way to Frontier Park because there's complications up there. But I would like to note, you know, the plan shows these street sections, and even on the very bottom there in the chart, it does highlight the portion of Green Garden between 26th and 38th Street. And interestingly, at the time, we documented it as having striped shoulders, not on-street parking, because when we did all of our site visits for this project and did all of it, we do a lot of looking at online mapping, we didn't observe any on-street parking at the time of that document preparation. So subsequent to us wrapping up the Active Erie Plan, our partners over at the MPO have been working, as you all are aware, on their annual transportation improvement program. And Green Garden Boulevard kind of rose to the top for funding, not only because it was included in the Active Erie Plan, but because it also had been identified many years ago as part of the Erie Urban Bike Loop Trail, which was a proposal kind of put forth by some advocates in the city. And also, we looked at some other north-south routes. And Cascade, unfortunately, cannot use MPO funding because that street is not eligible for federal aid, which is where those dollars come from. And although Pittsburgh Ave, which is our other north-south route in the vicinity, is eligible for that funding, it would be much more expensive to do that project because right-of-way acquisition would be necessary. So that's more of a long-term project. So that is kind of what got us to the point where we were funded to move forward with the Green Garden project. But before I move into that, I would like to pause to see if there are any questions about the Active Erie Plan.
I have a question. If you used Pittsburgh Ave, wouldn't Mill Creek pay for half of it? Or did anybody think about it?
That's a very good question. And I think that would have to be worked out. Leanne would welcome your feedback on how generally you handle transportation improvements along corridor that's a shared boundary with your neighbors.
A lot of times, we do have agreements with the board and municipalities. We'd have to look into that.
I have another question. You said that you did not realize there was on-street parking at Green Garden? Did I understand that correctly?
Well, it was not documented at the time. So when we generally, when we do these planning efforts, what we do is we come out, we visit the places we're working, we bike around, we walk around, we take a lot of notes. Also, we talk to folks via the survey process and community meetings. And at the time, you know, we knew there was not parking, parking was not restricted on the street, but also, we did not observe any parked cars at any point in time, both in person or when we are looking at aerial mapping or anything like that. So I just wanted to, in the spirit of transparency, hold on, let me get back to my slide, note that in the chart that does appear in the plan itself, it says potential recommendations, convert shoulders to bike lanes, add striping. So in the plan, we did not envision, you know, we did not document, there's on-street parking here. This needs to be aggressively discussed with the community because it was not even known that the parking was something that was regularly utilized. So just wanted to point that out in the planning process for the sake of transparency. And obviously, since that time, we are well aware of that concern and that comes like a point with the on-street park provided, or currently allowed on that corridor.
How is it that you get that aerial view to come to that conclusion?
Oh, we use a variety of mapping programs that are available to many of us, Google Maps, Bing as well. And different providers kind of have different dates available. So even with Google, you can kind of go back in time historically and look at aerials of a given street over the past, say, 20 years or so. We also have what's called an ESRI product. So each of those companies kind of source aerial maps from different places and different times. So we kind of refer to a lot of that because obviously, we cannot measure or document or visit every single foot of every street in a city. So in addition to the site visits, when we're getting out there and walking around, we rely on aerial mapping quite frequently.
May I ask how many people that live on Green Garden were talked to about this? Other than aerial maps and people out of town?
I could, no, I cannot. During the Active Erie process, I cannot answer that specific question because generally, when we speak to a member of the public, we don't know exactly where they live. All I can say is that when we did do that public survey, we had over 300 respondents. And one of them, you know, some of them might have lived on Green Garden Street, but I'm not sure that they did. I think it wasn't until this recent proposal that we definitely got a lot of engagement from the neighbors, which is really great. That's what we wanted when we did the press release in partnership with all the project partners back in January. So, and generally, that is often the way these projects work. Because when we do plans that are for a bigger area, whether it's a city or an entire county, often, the folks who are involved with those plans are people who are interested in biking more, are interested in walking more, and have those concerns. And it isn't until we get out to work on a specific project when broader members of the public begin coming out and getting involved in the public process. So we're very happy to see that that did happen here, and we had a more broad base of participation over the course of the past few months.
Out of curiosity, I did pull up--
Unfortunately, despite-- Go ahead, sorry.
Out of curiosity, I did pull up Google Maps since-- and there is only one parked car on that whole stretch of property. I could see, I could see how that would be seen as not used as parking. Google Maps has one single car parked in that lane from 26th to 38th.
And obviously, those images are only a moment in time, right? And we're well aware of that when looking at it, but that is, thank you for checking that out. Any other questions? I have a couple more slides before I turn it over to Erin. All right. So when we, you know, funding was received, and the city determined that they'd like to move forward for the Green Garden project. So kind of the first thing we do, we already had a very high-level bit of documentation as part of the Active Erie process, but we really get a little bit more into detail as we get into what we call concept design. And we're also, you know, as transportation professionals, kind of bound by a lot of guidance. So we've listed on the screen here a number of the resources that we refer to to kind of inform our plan for the corridor. Of course, PennDOT is funding this, and Green Garden is a PennDOT roadway, so we looked at the PennDOT design manual, contextual roadway design, as well as a nationwide document from an organization. You know, we love our acronyms in the transportation world. Ashto Guide for the Development Bicycle Facilities. There's another urban-specific BikeWay Design Guide, and then a couple of documents from the federal government. So we kind of take a look at all of these different resources and how they apply to a given street, in this case, Green Garden. And we also then looked at kind of our constraints. The budget for this project is pretty small, so we were not looking at any point in kind of moving the curb line. I'm sure, as you can all imagine, it's much more expensive to move a curb, to create more space, than it is to work within the existing space between the curves. So we kind of were limited as to what we could do. So we were kind of looking within that space, what is possible based on that design guidance. So what that resulted in is the plans that you've all seen, I'm sure, by now. Shared lane markings, or shareos, between Bayfront Parkway and 12th Street. And buffered bike lane between 12th and 16th. Standard, just one line marked bike lane between 16th and 25th. Shareos again, between 25th and 26th, and then buffered bike lanes point south. So you'll notice in some of those areas where we're only proposing shareos, the reason for that is because there is not enough space to provide a full five-foot bike lane, which is the minimum dimension we need for a bike lane for, based on those design guidance documents we had. And in some instances, you know, on the kind of northern stretch of the street, there's more than one travel lane for cars. And in those places, we know, thanks to a lot of existing work going on in the 16th Street corridor, especially in 12th Street corridor, there's enough volume of cars there that were we to reduce that to one lane for cars, it would be pretty catastrophic for the traffic circulation. So unfortunately, until there is funding to kind of widen the street in those locations and/or put a bike facility up outside the curb, the shared use path or something like that, at this point, shareos are what there's room for. But in places further south, where again, there's kind of some extra space between the curves that seems to be underutilized, we did propose buffered bike lanes. But of course, that does require the removal of on-street parking on select blocks. So the other chart we refer to heavily when we're doing bike facility planning is from that federal BikeWay Select Guide I talked about. So what you'll see in this chart is two kind of points of information. One is the speed that traffic is traveling. And unfortunately, I think we all know that even if a corridor is marked for a given speed, that does not mean that is how quickly cars are moving or slowly cars are moving. So Green Garden is marked at 25 miles per hour. And the other kind of factor we have to consider is how many cars are on the road. Because obviously, the more cars that are driving, the higher, the more conflict points we have. For every car that drives by, someone biking, that's a conflict point. And when it's a lot of cars, you know, you're dealing with a car passing every couple seconds, that is what creates, makes a stressful street. That's what makes a dangerous street. So basically, the higher speeds get and the higher those volumes get, the more protection and separation you need between someone biking and someone driving. So, you know, on streets where you have, you know, less than 2,000, 3,000 cars a day and low speeds between 20 and 25 miles per hour, it's pretty safe for bikes to share that space with cars in that shared lane. But once your volumes get a little higher, your speeds get a little higher, you get into that kind of bike lane with a buffer's preferred territory. Based on data from PennDOT about the volumes, you know, we're kind of in between that 3,000 and 4,000 cars a day area. And based on feedbacks from the community over the years, actually, well before this project was even an idea, I know Leanne and the folks at the city have been receiving complaints about speeding on this corridor. So we, you know, don't know. We did not do a speed study for this, but just based on anecdotally, we're assuming folks are traveling a little faster than the posted speed of 25, perhaps even closer to 30. So that kind of puts us in that zone based on that federal guidance of a bike lane being the preferred treatment here. So that's, you know, we tried to take, you know, make this a pretty structured decision-making process, and that's how we landed kind of in the buffered bike lane area. Again, the goal here is really to improve safety for everyone, and one of the best ways to do that is to take cars and bikes out of the same place, give them both a designated place to be within the roadway. That way, they both can move freely through the space. So what that resulted in, and I'm sure you've seen this section, is kind of reallocating that space by removing the designated on-street parking. I will say, after we heard the feedback from local residents, we did come back and kind of take a second look at this and whether a shareo could be appropriate on this corridor as a way to mitigate that parking impact. And then we had to go to another document, the UTCD, which does govern where a shareo should be placed in the roadway. The point of these markings is to really tell a bike where they should be positioned in the road. But it does not, of course, provide a separate space for them. So basically, it tells, and it's called shared because it puts bikes right in the same place that a car is gonna be traveling. And often, it is used on streets where parallel parking is to kind of get the bike away from the cars so that they're not struck by a door opening. So on a very crowded street, maybe in the downtown area, actually, one of the most dangerous things that kills cyclists the most is actually kind of riding into someone getting out of their parked car. A bike collides with that door. It's a very dangerous type of crash. Shareos also serve a function of just letting people know that a bike could be in the roadway. But one thing regarding where they're positioned is they're not supposed to be used on the shoulder or kind of off to the side. They have to be in the travel lane, and that's, like, we cannot use them in any location but in the travel lane. So what that would look like here is basically positioning bikes right in where our cars are traveling so that they're out of the way where cars are parked. So that's all well and good, except for the fact that we know that there really are not a huge number of parked cars. And a cyclist approaching the street is probably not going to want to ride right where the cars are because that feels unsafe. They're gonna take advantage of that big striped marked shoulder that is a parking area right now and ride off to the side. So our professional opinion is that really shareos would be, actually, make the street worse than it is right now because it's going to tell bikes they should be in the lane with cars. And in reality, probably, the safest place for them to ride is what they're doing right now, which is riding in that parking lane, which is very rarely occupied by parked cars. So I'm gonna pause there and see if anyone has any questions about kind of our second look at the shareos.
My question is the same. I repeat, how many people that live on Green Garden have you talked to? The folks there are generally retired. They totally rely on folks to come do their landscaping, their snow removal, you name it. Paint the house, whatever. They need parking area. I received an awful lot of calls, and most of them, their biggest concern is that they weren't involved in planning this. I just wanna know, how many people did you talk to on Green Garden from 26th to 38th?
Yeah, so actually, I think this might be a good time to turn it over to Erin because since we kind of put out this plan and this presentation for feedback, I know the city has received an overwhelming amount of feedback, both from members of the city, city residents broadly, and specifically residents along Green Garden. And I believe Erin does have that broken out based on where folks live. So I can stop sharing, and Erin can take it from here.
So like Leah said, the survey was posted on the 17th of March in order to take a step back and get outreach out into people, into the neighborhoods where the project is happening, and also into the hands of all of other city residents who could potentially be using this as a bikeway. Overwhelming response is kind of an understatement. This was huge in terms of survey responses that we've gotten from people in the past. We received 676 total survey responses. That's, that could be anyone who went online and took the survey. About a third of those, or two-thirds, excuse me, two-thirds, 456 people identified themselves as city residents, which means that another third were from people that don't necessarily live in the city, but were interested in the project. About 10% of responses, 66 people who took the survey, are identified themselves as Green Garden residents. So 10% out of 676 total people.
Do we have any contact information for the 13 people that are not city residents and also don't have an opinion on it and still wanted to fill out the survey?
Potentially. You know, the contact information was optional, but yeah. There's a couple question marks of, you know, what, why did you take this survey? What's your interest here?
Do you know how many older folks stopped taking a survey because they couldn't do it?
We didn't ask anything about age or demographic information.
Well, you should check the demographic information with those people that live there.
Well, yeah, so we collected addresses for everyone, and we can pull census information for demographics as well to know what the demographics of the neighborhood are like.
Most of them got frustrated and didn't finish it. That's my point.
Yeah. Well, we did, we got 66 responses, and I think there's over about 100, 120 people who live on Green Garden. So that's over half of people that live on Green Garden took the survey, which I think, in terms of public input, that's a very good response. So one of the questions in the survey, the first one at the top there, generally, we ask people to characterize their views on bike lanes. This wasn't specifically about Green Garden, but just generally, what is your feeling about bike lanes? Your views? All of the people who took the survey, 72% of folks said that they support bike lanes in general. About 22% said that they oppose them. Of city residents alone, so that 456 people, again, very similar breakdown, 68% are in support. Of Green Garden residents alone, 70% said that they oppose bike lanes in general in the city. That leaves about 13%, that support, and 17% that are neutral, but also live on Green Garden. We asked questions about safety benefits of having bike lanes in the city, health benefits, and economic benefits. Top responses were that people were in favor that bike lanes make biking safer for everyone of all ages and abilities. They improve sight lines by not having parked cars in the way. They make the community healthier and make transportation more equitable. And people were also interested in the fact that bikes are more affordable to purchase and maintain and support the local economy by shortening commutes. So people are stopping at more local places. Do you need more? On the back page, the second page, this is where we asked specifically about the Green Garden project. And this question was a ranking question, so people had to choose out of three options, the first being no bike lane at all, no changes to the street. The second being a dedicated lane with a physical flexible post barrier. That's the top picture in the upper left. And then the third option being a bike lane that's painted and then has a painted buffer. So no physical barrier between the cars and the bikes, but has a painted three-foot buffer between the two. So they had to rank 1 through 3, 1 being the highest and 3 being the lowest. People who chose any kind of bike lane, whether it's the dedicated lane with the flexible posts or the painted lane, that is about 490 people of the 676 who took the survey were in favor of a bike lane on Green Garden specifically. So that's 72% of people who took the survey. And then when they had to choose a second choice, so that leaves, if you chose a buffered painted lane as your first choice, that leaves you no lane at all, painted lane as your first choice, that leaves you no lane at all, or a flexible post dedicated lane as your second choice, 92% of people chose a bike lane as their second choice. So it's a pretty overwhelming response. When you break it down by city residents, and this is not on that, on this sheet specifically, but I can share this in more detail if you're interested, but of city residents, it's pretty similar. About 68% of people were in favor of a bike lane on Green Garden, whether it be with a physical barrier or a painted lane. Any questions on that before I go to our last survey question?
Have there been any studies on the number of bikes that rides up and down Green Garden as though we do, same as we do traffic study, whether to put a stop sign somewhere or not? We get a number of the cars that go travel. Did we do anything like that with bike? Or?
They don't do it.
I am not sure.
So we did not do that for this effort, and part of the reason why is one of the problems with doing that kind of count on a street without any bike infrastructure currently is that people may be avoiding that street because they do not feel safe on it currently, or may be electing to use another parallel route. So it kind of, you know, without the facility there, generally, a count does not provide, it's kind of hard to estimate what its use would be afterwards, as opposed to with a traffic count for cars, we know there's cars there, the road is there for cars to travel on. So generally, it's not our approach to do that. Kind of the study, kind of quantitative study that we did was what's called kind of that level of traffic stress thing I mentioned earlier, which really was looking at every street across the city based on, you know, posted speed, volume, how many lanes there are, and things like that to assign a value, one to four, one being really low stress and four being high stress for riders, because often we find these high-stress roads create barriers, so people maybe cannot use certain streets or will not use certain streets because of how safe they feel. So that's kind of the quantitative study that's established in the planning profession as how we approach the bike network planning process.
Thank you. Another question. Will the residents on Green Garden be able to park in front of their houses as they do today during the winter time?
Like a seasonal bike lane? Is that what you're wondering about?
I don't know what you want to call it, but, you know, as Ed said, have someone removing their snow?
Wouldn't that be eliminated? If it's one without a barrier, you can still have parking, but if it has barriers, and those are permanent.
I think once it's striped as a bike lane, they will not be allowed to have parking legally. In the winter, there's still people that need to ride their bikes.
I have a question. For other parts of the town that have bike lanes, I think there's someone, I think, I'm not sure. Was the community asked about the bike lanes, or were those just put on in other parts of the town, like we are doing with Green Garden? I mean, like, when we put those new streets on Prairie Street or whatever, you know, and they redid the road, and I'm riding up, I'm like, oh, there's a bike lane here. Was that something that the community that lives on Prairie Street, were they given the same questionnaire, surveys as the people on Green Garden?
I don't believe we sent out letters to the residents on Prairie Street at that time. We were defining the lane, because Prairie Street was very wide, and people mistook it as two lanes, and they would pass each other. So we were defining the lane, and then we were able to add the bike lane with that, and still have parking.
Yeah, it is, did notice it was, looked like it was, it's a lot wider, so it might be easier to do a bike lane there, but that was just a question I had about.
East 38th Street was the same way?
Nobody's getting on a bike on 38th Street.
Oops, not area there.
Oh, that has share rows as well?
That was what?
That has share rows that tend to put in with their project?
That was like an $800,000 waste of paint. But anyways, if you, nobody feels safe biking on 38th Street. And to go back to Mo's question was, there was engagement with Prairie Street, but this plan looked totally different when Prairie Street was being engaged. The plan was to go east to west, I guess back then, from across, like, building from, like, the, from where the 19th Street tracks were and making a bikeway, and they promised us a bridge over the highway, and so they were engaged, but it was, it looked totally So I actually have a related but unrelated question. So I understand we must have an MPO. The MPO puts out the transportation plan. And so with nearly a third of the people in this county actually live in the city, and yet we have two seats on this board. And so theoretically speaking, the people who do not live in the city have more say on the MPO than the people in the city. And a lot of times, and a lot of times, they do not frequent, I would say, the places that they're making recommendations for. And so I find that, you know, that that's a system problem. I understand that we do need, have to have an MPO by law, but, you know, I would like to see it balanced by, by the number of people or the percentage of the people who live in the different municipalities.
Mr. Keys, we actually, the city has six seats on the MPO board.
Out of?
Twenty-three. Yeah, so there's twenty-three seats. It's two for the, it's two for PennDOT, one for the county, six for the City of Erie, one for the City of Corey, one for Fairview, one for Harbor Creek, one for Lawrence Park, two for Mill Creek, one for Summit, one for Westerville, one for the Associations of Boroughs, two for the Associations of Townships, and then one for the Port Authority, the EMTA, and the Airport Authority. So maybe six, and then some spots where it gets a little squishy with port or EMTA or airport could be further representation, or the county.
But I looked at the names also, and even the names of the people who were, were city representatives didn't, didn't even live in the city. So.
I tell you made a good point, but the liquid's quiet.
Well, just to round out the last of the survey questions, and then I'll give it to Leanne to talk about the timeline for the project. The final question was just a general one about different types of bike infrastructure that people were most in favor of generally around the city. Their options, again, being similar to what the Green Garden Boulevard project includes, which are the protected lane with the flexible posts, the buffered painted bike lane, and then share rows, a shared-use path similar to the one on the bayfront, and then a dedicated bike lane, but without the painted buffer between the cars and D Lane. So people were asked to rank those five options from one to five. The top options in terms of the first choice, people's top decision, was the protected bike lane with the flexible posts was the most popular decision generally around the city. The second one was charity's path, and the third most favorite option was the buffered painted bike lane with that three-foot painted buffer between the cars and the bikes. If you combine the first and second choices, it's fairly similar. The protected bike lane with the flexible post was top choice again, and the buffered painted lane and the shared-use path were also top choices generally around the city.
Once again, around the city doesn't mean it thinks the people who live on Green Garden are going to be most affected.
Right. And the Green Garden responses are in the graph right above that.
The ones that you don't have there are the ones that couldn't fill out the survey, which wasn't even made up until early. If I understand it correctly, the Green Garden Association received a email from our engineering department saying, cease and desist, we're not going to do anything from 26th to 38th. And then on Monday, we come up with another survey. I'm talking for the people, not for me, because I can't answer them when they call me. Why do we have that? Anyone know why three people want a bridge over Lockwood? It's a frontier, so the mayor's going to let that happen. But listening to 99% of the people in Green Garden, we don't do it. I want to know why. And the people want to know why, Mayor.
I think we listened to them.
You think you listened to them?
Absolutely. That's what you just heard.
You want to take a walk on Green Garden with them, Mark? You can listen to them. I'll take a door, Door.
We've already done the survey.
You didn't do the people, though.
We had 66 people there.
You didn't do the people.
What about the 66? Don't they count?
No, if they don't live on Green Garden.
They do live on Green Garden.
66 people on Green Garden.
That's what you just heard.
No, I didn't hear that.
Yes. Isn't that true?
66 Green Garden.
She said it. I guess she wasn't listening.
When we, when people, when people took the survey, they were able to fill out their address, I took all of the addresses that listed a Green Garden address on the survey. There were 66 people who listed a Green Garden address on the survey.
And they all said?
Of those 66, 70% oppose, 13% are in favor, and 17% are neutral to the project. So those are, those are our responses from Green Garden residents specifically.
Again, I'm speaking for the people. I represent you to that.
That's not represented here.
Sir, is that everything with your results?
That's, yes, yep.
Leanne?
I just wanted to go over this timeline, because this is a PennDOT advertised project, so it's a little bit longer than a City of Erie project. So we have an anticipated advertisement of May 25th, and then we have a let date, which means that the bids are open, July 13th, and then sometime, not necessarily exactly August 16th, but sometime after that, we will come to the city council for approval to enter into an agreement with the contractor. And then the notice to proceed will come from PennDOT to the contractor approximately October 5th. So one of the things, it's late in the construction season, so some of the painting and some of the base repair may not be done until spring 2024, but PennDOT will be able to appropriate the funds for that time period. So I just wanted you to be aware of what the scheduled timeline would be.
And I think it's important to recognize the fact that the funding source for the construction project is roughly $350,000, and what that covers is cost for road reconstruction, costs to replace the storm sewer, grades to be bicycle-friendly, additional signage and painting. So that's, $350,000 was allocated for this project, for the construction phase.
What the storm sewers have to do?
They have to have the special grade so the tires don't get caught in them.
I guess I don't ride, but I still got a tricycle.
Question, so also see you had a plan for Parade Street, and I happen, not Parade, French Street. And I happened to notice that the people there, I don't know if they're unaware, but I've noticed that there was not a lot of engagement with the people, you know, seemingly on the east side. But I drive up that street all the time, and it's a much greater concern there where a lot of people don't have off-street parking. Then you get to 26th Street and you have the school. I don't think there's any way we can take away those lanes going up 20, from 26th going, going south, especially with the school being there. And so while it's still in the planning phase, not in the letting phase, I would hope that maybe we get out there and look and see what's realistic.
Leanne, what did the fire department have to say about the first responded road being narrow again?
The, uh, Fire Department?
Has to go up Green Garden to access Southwest here. So they were never involved in it?
We spoke with the Fire Department, they are supportive, without the barrier, with the, with the buffer, painted buffer, they were supportive.
On a, on a street like French Street, the one-way, does that, the lane will be on both sides, or how does that, how does that construct up?
So that one would be a two-way, separated bike lane. So we're still in preliminary design for French Street. So we have a lot of time to, we're a year behind in that project. So we have a lot of time to do more outreach and to do more design for that.
And the answer here is about 26th Street South, that currently, we're not taking away parking on French Street in that section. That will be a shared lane condition at some point.
If we went down Pittsburgh Avenue and only paid for half of it, why don't we look at it? Let Mill Creek pay for the other half.
I guess it's something we can look at.
Oh, just a thought. Again, you're not getting the calls I'm getting from the Green Garden folks. Granite, I'm blessed with sacrament, Prisner, Granite, my boys went there, my wife taught preschool there, so I know a lot of those folks. I'm not blowing smoke up here, folks. Nobody came to those people at the beginning, and nobody understands the kind of life those people have. The majority of them are retired, and I don't care what you say about your survey, honey. A bunch of them couldn't finish the damn things because they didn't know if they should take this picture or that picture, or whatever picture to get the thing done, after they were told that nothing was going to happen but engineering work. The people are confused, and the terrible thing about it is that they almost want to give up. They don't care about voting anymore because it doesn't matter. And I keep on telling them that's not true. Bottom line is, if you read the Declaration of Independence, their vote is more important than anybody sitting right here. And they have to, they have to believe that. I don't mean to get melodramatic about it, but as far as I'm concerned, this is a goal to die on. These people don't want it, and I will fight for them to not have it, at least until a complete study is done. Check that Pittsburgh Avenue thing. It's a win-win to pay for half of it and Mill Creek pays the other half. There'd be easier way, you know, we didn't even talk about getting down to Parkway on Green Garden. From 26th down, that's a pretty ugly stretch of road. You had two sets of tracks. Granite is after 21st, we just don't know a whole lot of people, people, but they don't want to lose their situation either. I honestly haven't talked to a whole lot of people below 26th Street. 26th, 38th, like I said, surveys can be whatever they can be. I know what the, folks were here when they filled this place for the hearing? Yeah, they were all here. It wasn't 70% of them. Anyway, again, I digress. I'm just saying that for me, it's a goal to die on, and only one vote, but I'm going to be a very loud vote on it. Thank you.
Oh, after you, Mayor. So it might be, you know, advantageous for our representatives on the MPO to give quarterly reports to the city council, because this was like three years in the making, and then, you know, it came out, you know, and some of this, even some of the council persons were not up to speed on what, where it was at. And so I think that if we're going to be making plans, that, you know, that we should be abreast of them, you know, and so that we can do our jobs effectively. And so maybe that's something that can be coordinated, that, you know, if we're working on something big, or something that's going to change our streets, or, you know, that we bring it to council early on.
That's a good recommendation.
Okay, so I'm going to tell you what our recommendation is.
Okay, so I'm going to tell you what our recommendation is in terms of, obviously, you guys, you guys have to vote on it. But there's five options for what we could do. And if you look at the back of this page, it's got the five options. Five. For a bike lane. Types of bike lanes that you can do. First is a dedicated lane with a physical barrier, which was the original proposal for this. Next was proposed painted lane. Next is the shallows, a shared-use path, and a dedicated lane with no buffer. We're recommending that we do a buffered painted lane on Green Garden from Twenty-Sixth to Thirty-eighth. We believe that will be good for that neighborhood going forward. And that's our recommendation. Do you have a good answer, any questions you might have?
What's the current penalty? I'm looking at fifty-two, I'm sorry, five-twenty-one, our current ordinance. What's prohibiting people from parking in biking lanes right now? I don't currently see any law on our books prohibiting that. Nowhere in five-hundred-and-twenty-one does it say anything about biking lanes to give any sort of penalty for it. So I'm just curious if this is something we're seeing as a state law that we're looking to enforce?
And with the bike lane, we would have no parking signs as well along the corridor?
So currently, I just, I don't see anywhere that's defined by us as that it's prohibited to park in a bike lane in the city of Erie. So I'm just curious, you know.
It's state law.
It's state law? Because we still have a law about handicap parking.
We allow handicap parking?
No, the penalties that, that you get for handicap parking are determined by city ordinance. So if there's no law against parking in a bike lane, I find this all to be a very ineffective, ineffective conversation to be having. I mean, we, we currently, I, I'm not sure. So I would just, I guess it's something I'll figure out by August. But, but if Green Garden doesn't have any penalty for parking in the bike lane, then I can't imagine they have much problem with it. And I can't imagine the bikers would be very happy.
I think with the, with the no parking signing that goes along with the bike lane, then that would be a violation of that sign.
Mr. Mayor, a question. You said that you think, you guys think it would be a good thing for the neighborhood. Can you explain why you feel that way?
We think it would actually slow traffic down on Green Garden and having the bike lane there next door where people are driving. Right now, a lot of people drive way too fast on that Green Garden. And I think it would be safe and it would just encourage people to drive more under control.
Thank you.
So this is not on your agenda?
It may be, by way of rules.
So. Let's, in, it's ordinance five-twenty-one. It's parking prohibited in specific places. You can't park on sidewalk, an intersection, you can't park on a crosswalk, you can't park. Is it a safety zone? I, I'm not sure this is counting as a safety zone unless, unless you let me know if this is a safety zone. You can't park along, there's a whole list of them. None of them seem to indicate what we're talking about right now. So right now, there is, you can't park within fifty feet of the entrance of a private, public, or parochial school between the hours of. You can't park in any alley. You can't, this is, it's a comprehensive ordinance that we have that says nothing about bike lanes. Right now, there is complaints from Green Garden about whether or not they can park where they would want to. And we currently have no law against it, no matter what we paint on the, on the road, as far as I can see.
Sure, yes, yes. The side, yeah.
The side, there's no ordinance about that either. Even the odd even parking, the seasonal stuff, the which day of the week things, we have that defined by ordinance. So parking in bike lanes, I, I'm, and I, it's, I'm speaking ignorantly is that I don't know where this is. But I'm also telling you that I've looked for it and I can't find it. So we need an ordinance to go along with this, which I think may, may be another discussion that we're going to be having.
I don't think you need an ordinance because there's a state law against it. Or the force of state law.
All right, I can't find the state law on that, but. We'll have to ask Batson.
I think if they put a no parking anytime sign, I don't think folks would park there. Because you've got to get a ticket.
That's the trucks that roll.
So the plan.
Yeah, I know. I know that. They're going to get a ticket. And they'll come down here. They're going to holler at the police. Because I'm coughing off that day. Yeah, it's six for one-half dozen of them.
What does the conversation require when I suggest Pittsburgh Avenue as an alternative road? Why, what's the problem with it?
There was some, was it about a right-of-way tape?
The, the.
It's much more expensive.
It is one of the. Every half is expensive. Half of it is us and half of it is.
States are paying for this one, this one's free for us.
Plus, if I get to Erie rather than the Harvick.
It's a lot of, it's a lot of money.
Yeah, so just, and, and to kind of chime in here, again, the goal is a network across the city. So it's not one or the other long-term. At least, the goal of the active area plan is not to pick one north-south route. It's really to have that interconnected network of north-south routes over time being built out across the city such that there is a safe place to ride so people can get from where they lived to where they want to go. Because right now, you know, when folks walk out their front door, maybe they can get a couple blocks away before they run into a road that feels unsafe or a little too big to pass. So again, the long-term vision of that plan is to build out a bike network citywide.
There is one plan for Pittsburgh Avenue.
Regarding the, the parking restriction, I, I can say that Pendot would not allow the implementation of a bike lane without no parking marked. The ability of the city of Erie to designate no parking areas, you are all the experts on that, and there very well may need to be an ordinance. One thing we can do is a little bit of digging and look at what other local ordinances look like in other municipalities in Pennsylvania. So we can take a look at that and get back to you with some more information about the parking restriction.
Yeah, I'm looking at the bills from the state. It's House Bill seven-ninety-two, and I don't see evidence of it being passed. It's been discussed for years. And it seems to be that it's up to the local municipalities to pass an ordinance to not park in a bike lane. So as of now, if all of the people in Green Garden want to park in this lane that's going to be painted in the fall, there is no penalties for them to park in that lane, which seems ineffective for everything we're discussing today. Whatever side you're on, this seems like it would be ineffective.
But the plan would.
It means we have another step to take.
They ought to smile. The Tigers won last night in eleven innings, seven to six. The eleventh, we start with the Seagulls. They have a nice young team. Get down there.
Is there anything else to contribute for this? All right. Nice meeting you.